Welcome, welcome to our meeting, our board meeting. Director Hammerson has volunteered to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. I always ask if we have members of the media here. I don't see any present. Are there any members of the media online? That would like to introduce themselves. Okay, doesn't look like it. Just a reminder to mute your cell phones, please, and to turn the microphones on when you speak, and then turn the microphone off when you're finished. So this is our regular, we're going to do a regular board meeting first. And so I'm going to hand it over to Jared for review of the agenda and communications to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great to see everybody tonight. Thank you so much for being here, our guests. Thank you. I know you're coming in with things, other things going on at the college and other places. So thank you. Great to have our staff here as well. The agenda, no revisions to the agenda, so it is as published. And that's all I got for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. First action item that we have is we are considering approval of adding one additional year to Superintendent Jared Corden's employment contract. And so at the executive session that we had this afternoon, the board had the opportunity to complete the annual superintendent evaluation process. And if the board is in agreement, I will entertain a motion to add one additional year to his employment contract. So this is a three-year rolling contract, which would now become effective July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2028. Do I have any motion?
Move that.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? Great. All those in favor? I, okay, it is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
The next thing we have is, I would like to read a statement. So Superintendent Jared Corden continues to demonstrate an unwavering commitment to our students and community. He has brought a deep knowledge of instruction, leadership, and innovation to our district while constantly advocating on behalf of our students. This will be Superintendent Corden's sixth year leading Roseburg Public Schools in a season where approximately one-third of Oregon's 197 school districts have superintendents in the first or second year on the job, or districts who are currently looking for a superintendent. It is rare to have such an established yet outstanding superintendent who has not only committed to upholding our strategic plan, but is fiercely committed to student outcomes. He enforces the board's passion that our students do not just achieve a diploma, but that a Roseburg diploma is earned with much rigor, is truly of value, and sets up our students for successful futures. Passionate about what happens to our students after they graduate, he is continuing to grow our career technical education, CTE, to cutting-edge levels and works tirelessly with Umpqua Community College and local industries to provide students with hands-on learning experiences and direct connections to high-demand, high-wage careers in fields like advanced manufacturing and healthcare. Superintendent Corden has also led efforts to remove financial barriers for student engagement, eliminating fees to participate in CTE courses, electives, and extracurricular activities. He wisely oversees our finances, and we are in good standing as he had forethought in handling ESER funds, planning for anticipated PERS adjustments, strategic planning of seismic safety upgrade grants, and continued our nine-year record of attaining the highest assurance of our annual independent audit, just to name a few. Not only are we blessed to have a superintendent who is a visionary, dedicated to our community, and is well-connected on local, state, and national levels, but has sought out for his leadership in creating solutions to the challenges that face all rural public schools across Oregon and the nation. In closing, I think Vice Chair Rodney Cotton said it best. Superintendent Corden's vision, dedication, and tireless work have propelled our district forward, setting a standard of excellence that benefits not just our students, but our community as a whole. His abilities to lead with humility, focus on collaboration, and drive for continuous improvement are exactly what our district needs to navigate the challenges of today's educational landscape. Thank you. We're happy to have you for another year. Okay, so I am convening the regular work session, but I'm opening, closing, excuse me, the meeting, but now I'm convening the work session. Okay, so first on our list, we have Annalysia Nicholson from the ESD, and she's going to give us an update.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to be with you. I just wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude for the partnership between Douglas ESD and the Roseburg Public Schools. My journey as the leader is guided by Douglas ESD's motto, "To listen, learn, and lead." Our strategic design, as I've shared, emphasizes continuous growth and service, and these principles have driven us to foster stronger collaborations with our districts. An example of that is Horizon back here. As you all know, Randall is the leader of that program. It serves as a positive example of our two entities working together to meet a community need. Through this integration, we are providing a unique program to students that's been highly beneficial to the kids in that program. And we're always ecstatic every time we hear another student is graduating. We aim to continue strengthening our partnership and integration between our two entities. Jared and I regularly meet to discuss strategies to achieve this. And so just thank you once again for your continued support. It's truly a pleasure to serve the Roseburg Public School District, your staff, but mostly your students, your fantastic, wonderful students we get the pleasure of working with every day. So thank you.
Thank you so much for the update. Are there any questions? Great. Thank you so much for coming. It's a pleasure to see you. And now we are going to have our UCC partnership update with UCC President Dr. Rachel Porcand. We are very grateful to have her because she just came flying in hot, and she will be flying out hot as she has a lot of things on her plate this evening. But we are so thankful that you are here for now.
It really is just basketball, but you know, it's a huge game for us because it's Lane, and it's our biggest rival. And there are millions of people in the UCC gym, which is super fun for our students. So I will be dodging right back out. And just, I have to say that on the basketball note, I've been to a couple of your games at the high school the last few weeks. And I'm a theater major, so I love sports, but I really love performing arts. And your band that plays at the games is just the best thing in the whole world. If you haven't seen them or enjoyed them at the game, even if you don't like basketball, show up for the band because they're amazing. I'm there for the band, but I pretend to watch the basketball. Okay, so I am going to attempt to navigate this Mac computer. What, you know, what are you going to do? This, yeah, right? This is what partnership's all about, though, right? My PC and your Mac. So thank you. Thanks for having me back. I feel like I was just here, but it's lovely to see you all. I have a few updates about the college. But I'm also going to sort of start by zooming out to what's important about college and our partnership in this community. And what I have a few slides just to show you some data. And please jump in and ask me questions. I'm also a teacher by trade, so I'm always weirded out when I'm just talking at you. So please jump in. Our partnership, and then moving toward more of an integration model, which we've all talked about before. Yeah, it's about our kids, and it's about our two organizations. But it's really even more than that. It's about economic outcomes for the region. It's about economic outcomes for families here in Roseburg. And it's also about community health and well-being. I'm in many rooms where folks say, "Not everybody needs to go to college." And I agree. Not everybody needs a four-year degree. But if our kids want a future where they can make a family-supporting wage, they are going to need some skill or trade or degree in order to make that happen for them. It's critical. Not everybody needs to sit in six history classes, but they do need to learn how to weld or fix a car or take somebody's blood sample. These are the jobs that will make sure that our next generation is a net positive for our community. They won't be students who will need the community to support them. They will be helping to support the community. And that's what I believe our partnership is set up to achieve. It means that every single kid has that chance, right? To find that pathway that's for them. You have incredibly high-achieving kids that come out of your school district that we're all super proud of. And we need to make sure that there's a high-achieving pathway for every kid. It might not be Harvard. It might not be a UCC associate's degree. But they may be lucky enough to get into one of the medical programs that we're working on creating, or one of the advanced manufacturing programs that we're working on creating, and get that really high-skill, high-wage job that we want for them. So next time you're in a room with somebody that says, "Not everybody needs a college education," remember to help educate them because that's part of your job, too. You're right, not everybody needs a college degree, but everybody needs a skill that's marketable in order to support their family. I truly believe that what we're working on is going to create that. See, I'm pressing the button. See, I'm doing it. You could just like be my lovelily assistant right here.
As we're waiting, as we're waiting. Hey, Rachel, as we're waiting, I just want you to know our theater department, Mamma Mia, opens Friday.
Oh, I think I already have to get. Somebody invited me. I'm all over it. Yep. Okay, so a few graphs that I hope you can see from where you're sitting. This is earnings and unemployment rates by educational attainment level. So there's a few things going on here. You can see the weekly earnings of people based on what education level they attained. There's some, there's some super interesting parts of that, I think. There's a pretty big jump when it comes to a bachelor's degree. A slight jump when it comes to an associate's degree. I get pretty fixated on that some college, no degree. Sometimes that's seen as a bad thing, but oftentimes those are our students that are in our trade programs, right? So they haven't gotten an associate's degree, but they've gotten a really high-value certificate that gets them straight into a job. So they do much better, sometimes even than students with associate's degrees do. The other piece is the unemployment rate. So I talk to students a lot who say, "You know, I don't know if I'm going to finish. I'm just going to go take this job." Yeah, absolutely. That is the goal, right? You don't just go to school to go to school. You go to school to get a good job. But then when there's some sort of downturn in that workplace or those jobs are eliminated, you're the one that's going to suffer more in that unemployment realm. You're going to be the one that's less likely to be able to get the next job. So it's not just that pay level because we've all had lots of jobs over the years, right? And we all move around jobs or jobs go away, and we get other jobs. But what are you going to do and how are you going to be able to shop your credential around to get that next job? How are you going to stay employed? So again, just things for you to share with folks that you talk to. If they say, "You know, why are we focusing on college so much?" These are the reasons, right? We want people to be employed. We want them to be able to make enough money to support themselves. Yes, sir.
Quick question. What fits in the professional degree? But I knew you were about to change that. What fits in the professional degree bucket?
Yeah, so it's things like JDs. So you're not necessarily getting just a sort of regular doctorate. You're getting something that's a professional level. Or so JDs, MDs, those kinds of professional-level doctorate. Yep. Next slide, please. So the next one really shows how much you're going to make over your lifetime, depending on what sort of credential that you have. So again, some pretty big jumps, and these are all averages, right? So we know there's plenty of people who went to college who are billionaires now. So another really good example of why we want to create these pathways for our students, you can see that income disparity over time. When you look at the jump between high school to some, to associate's degree or some college, that is $400,000 over your lifetime. That's your house, right? That's paying off your house. That's a stable place for your family to live, for example. It's a big deal. I show these numbers a lot to students who are vacillating about whether they want to keep going and do a post-secondary education of some sort. And money matters to kids. It's a good motivator. It's when they can figure that out, it's a good motivator to keep going, especially when your classes that are difficult. Next slide, please. So this one is super interesting. So the red line in the middle is the median lifetime earnings for people with bachelor's degrees. So it's sort of the thread that goes through the middle. And I like this because it also illustrates that, sure, you don't have to get any credential of any kind, and you can still make a decent living. I recognize that. But don't we want to set up our students to have the best chance of making that higher lifetime earning? We don't know which side of that line they're going to fall if they don't get that credential of some sort. Again, I'm going to make your eye go to that middle, large, blue circle, some college, no degree. That's where these programs that you've been investing in at the high school and CTE and that we do as well, and we're doing with you, really fall. And you can see that that's a pretty big group and that there's a really good chance that you are earning way above sometimes what students with bachelor's degrees have when you come out with those credentials. And Jared has these slides so you can see all these metrics later. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we want our kids in Roseburg to have the very best chance possible of getting above that red line. We also want that for our community, right? We want them paying those taxes here and participating in school boards and being members of our community that give back and participate. Next slide, please. So here's what we are doing to make that happen. This is our dual-credit statistics from 2018 through today. And this, to me, sort of illustrates what happens when you really ramp up a partnership, and then you move even further into a more of an integrated model. So our numbers start to get much, much bigger as we get to 23, 24. As you can see, we go from 203 students who took dual credit in 22, 23 to 306 students who took dual credit. And the best part about this for the community that I hope you brag about is that you saved the families in your community $612,000 last year on tuition that they would have paid if those students hadn't had the opportunity to take dual credit. That is money that those families are spending in our community, at our businesses, reinvesting in everything that goes on here in Roseburg. So you can see the value proposition. I also love that the number of teachers that are teaching has gone up. Some of those are our teachers that are coming into your schools and teaching dual credit. But to me, it's sort of like, we had kind of a partnership, and then we really put our minds to it and strengthened the partnership. And then we're really moving into integration when we have those kinds of numbers, and we're making that kind of impact. It'll be cool to see what happens with all these kids and where they go with all these credentials. So why do we do this? The first thing that always strikes me, because I'm a bit of a geek about learning about community colleges, is that if you're unfamiliar, community colleges actually started in K-12 school districts. It was recognized back in the 50s and early 60s that a lot of students needed a 13th and 14th grade. And so the charter for community colleges actually came out of school districts. The way that UCC was founded was that the school board voted to have college here. Don't know if you knew that, but thank you for that. I often feel like we're so much more aligned with you than we are with the universities. The things we do are very similar. The first thing is that we take everybody, everybody that shows up at our door, they're our students, no matter what background they have, no matter how prepared or unprepared they are. We welcome them in, and they're our students, very, very similar to you. We serve everyone. We are moving from partnership to integration. We now have some shared positions, hoping for more. And I love that that's going both ways, by the way. You've had some needs that we've been able to fill. And here, coming up in the future, I think you're going to have some needs that are really going to help us out as well. So it really is mutually beneficial. And then, of course, we have this shared goal of increasing the skills of the local workforce. We both get to leverage our own unique assets in that, and I'm really proud of that. The other thing is, that is key, is that we were thinking about efficiency before it got really cool lately. There is an efficiency that we can realize from working together, sharing staff positions and sharing equipment and sharing buildings that wouldn't happen unless we were working together. And I know that we both take very seriously spending public dollars. We spend taxpayers' dollars. I say to my staff all the time, "Every single dollar you spend, you better make sure you can look over the fence at your neighbor and tell them why you spent it and how it made this community better." And I know that we think about that every single day. So we were doing efficiency before it was cool. I'm just going to point that out. Next slide, please. And then we also are alike because we both have a responsibility to respond to community need. We have extremely strained hospitals right now. The hospital resources are stretched thin. It is a very difficult position that our medical providers find themselves in. We all have dwindling access to care. We all know that. I'm going up to Eugene on Friday to have a doctor's appointment because I couldn't get in here. And the reason for that is because it's really hard for our medical providers to have their business model pencil out because they don't have enough providers. So they could actually make a lot more money. Again, the economics of their organizations get better when they can fill all of their positions because they can take more appointments, they can bill more, they have a stronger business model. And then we have a lot of folks that are working in that sector that are overworked and stressed out because they are doing much more than they probably should because they just don't have a workforce. We have a beautiful opportunity with this. We need to respond to those folks, and we also need great jobs for our kids. So it's almost too obvious, right? We have the talent, and they have the need. So we better figure out how to fix that pipeline. Next slide, please.
Question. It's a lot abstract, but do you know how many of your attendees are residents of our school district?
How many of our students are our actual Roseburg, our dual-credit students?
No.
No.
Live in our school district.
Oh, live in Roseburg. I don't, but I can find out really easily. I don't off the top of my head, but we do have those numbers. I actually have this really cool map that's got like a heat thing to it that shows where all of our students are from in Douglas County, so I can share that with you.
If you remember, I'd be curious.
Yeah, it's a, I'm not sure if it's a majority, but it's a lot compared to the outline areas in Douglas County. Oh, this is very small type. I apologize for that. This is the need, which is probably why it's small type, because there's a lot of need. So in Oregon, the healthcare sector added 15,000 jobs in 2004. So just think about that for a second. That's just one year, 15,000 new jobs, right? Oregon healthcare and social assistance businesses have more than 18,800 job vacancies as of January 2025. It's an enormous number. I'm not going to read that next one, but you'll have these slides. It's basically all the vacancies and things like nursing assistants and registered nurses and dental hygienists. Employment in social service and behavioral health occupations is expected to be more than 15% higher in 2032 than in 2022. So again, these are the kids in your schools right now that could be filling these jobs if we can get them trained up and interested in these careers. And in 2023, more than 70% of difficult-to-fill healthcare job vacancies required education beyond high school. And again, that doesn't mean a degree necessarily, right? We know all these career paths that students can get into pretty quickly. So we have a great match. It is sort of obvious that we're going to go ahead in this direction with healthcare careers. This is just another great graph that I like of just sort of the careers coming in the future. And the reason I wanted to show this one to you is these are mostly associate's degrees and up credentials. And this is the reason why the college isn't stopping at associate's degrees. So normally, community colleges go through associate's degrees, and then we send our students off to universities. And Jared says all the time that we, you know, we send logs and kids out of our communities, right? And we'd like to keep some of those kids. We're okay with the wood going out. We'll take people's money for that, but we'd like to keep some of the kids here. We're really trying to create a pipeline through partnerships with universities to offer a lot of these bachelor's, master's, and doctoral programs, at least part of them here, so that we can show a pathway right here to going all the way through and becoming a doctor or a Ph-level physical therapist or a nurse midwife or an esthetist. The only way we do that is partnerships. But unless we create them here, those students will go, and oftentimes, they don't come back to us. Slide, please. If you are not aware, because I end up in lots of meetings with our folks who are medical providers in the community, they're constantly saying, "We're a HISPRA. We're a HISPRA." And I had to learn what that was, but we are an area that is a healthcare professional shortage area. That is a national designation. It's often rural places. But that means that we are medically underserved, we're dentally underserved, mental health underserved, and primary care underserved. Again, I think even without that acronym, you could have probably told me that yourself, right? Because we all have those experiences here in the community. So again, reasons why we're in this game. Yes.
Has that been, have we been designated that for several years or?
Well, certainly since I've been here, and I've been here four years.
Since I've been here as well.
See, I've been here about 13 years, and I don't think, it didn't feel that way, you know? It seems like, but I don't know. Some of you.
Well, when I served on the board of Aviva, I don't recall ever hearing this, but every single checkmark is what we were constantly addressing. So even if we didn't have the official title of it, we definitely were that. And that was about 12 years ago.
We've been short.
We've been sure.
Most areas are, and this is why it's so exciting to me that. This is happening, that we can get out of that. It's gonna take time. But you're on the right track.
Yeah. What I love about living in places like Roseburg, smaller rural communities is that we're scrappy, right? We don't sit around and wait for somebody else to solve our problems. We roll up our sleeves and get after it and solve our own problems and I think that's exciting. Next slide. These are partners, so we are not just making stuff up off the cuff. We are working with our medical providers here in the community. We meet with them once a quarter and it's, it's all of the CEOs of these organizations. They are all on board and they are all supportive. They're all participating in making sure that we have clinicals for all of these students, making sure that we have instructors for all of these students. Making sure we have the facilities that we need to host these programs, so. I just wanna thank them and, and let you know that we are all working together on this issue. And then super small type again, but it's super small type because we're doing lots of stuff. So the left-hand side there are all UCC programs, the ones that I've highlighted. And little bit bolder type are the new programs that we've started in the last two and a half years. So. Okay, so we have certified nurse assistant or CNA, you've probably heard of. Dental assisting EMS and paramedic, nursing, that's an RN program. And we also have LPN now as well. We have phlebotomy, medical assisting, occupational therapy, surgical technology apprenticeship. Radiology technician, dental hygiene, that's coming super soon. Respiratory therapy technician and physical therapy assisting. So those are the ones that. We have just at the college that your students can be on a path to run right away. We also recently added a Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, no, sorry, Bachelor of Science in Nursing. With OHSU, we've had for a number of years. So our students that matriculate from RN can go on to the OS. HU program and finish in 18 months. We recently started one that's accelerated, so. If you want to and you're in the second year at UCC of the RN program, you can now enroll in the bachelor's degree at OHSU. And be done about three months after you finish with our program. So it's an accelerated model. You have to be a very dedicated student with not much more going on, but it is possible to get there. We also have a new Bachelor's in Social Work. That's a partnership with Idaho State University. And in the fall, we will initiate a Bachelor's in Medical Lab Science with ISU. That's a partnership as well. At the masters and doctoral level, it's a little bit different there. We can. We will offer some masters programs right here in the community. We'll do a masters in social work. And a masters in medical lab science. But we are also partnering to create more residencies and clinical opportunities, so. And this was all inspired by Aviva Health. You started a great residency program. If you don't know about it, you should have them come talk to you sometime. But it's an incredible model. And so why not do it in all these other areas? So we plan to do it with nurse practitioners. With physician's assistance, with physical therapy and occupational doctorate level. Students and with DOs, doctors of osteopathy. Again, these are all. Programs that have been identified by our medical provider partners. We're, I'm not just thinking of them in the shower in the morning. They're actually telling us exactly what they want, so. We will have all of these pathways and they, they're sitting there for our Roseburg students to, to see clearly where they could go. And just a few numbers because it's good to know what it means, right? So these are just the associate's level and certificate level programs, just a sampling for you to understand. What it means. Something that we look at a lot when we're thinking about what programs to offer is that. Living wage or family supporting wage number. There's a lot of data that can sort of inform that conversation for us. But basically, if you're a single person, you need to be making $21 an hour in Douglas County, which is about $40,000 a year. In order to support yourself. So we're always trying to think of, okay, what gets everybody over that threshold? Because again, we want to be in a community where people feel independent. They can take care of their own bills. They can participate in the community. They can see a clear path to a great future. That goes up if you have two adults and two kids. And those two adults are working, you need to be making $26.21 an hour. In order to support your family, in order to live here in Douglas County. So again, if you put that up against some of these programs that we're looking at. I feel like we're creating pathways that are sustainable for families, which is really, really important for our community. And then I just had to have pictures of cute students, cause that's what we do. We're super proud to partner with you. Thank you. I love the picture on the left because I took it. So our nursing students. Participate in the Veterans Day Parade every, every year and this is one of our nursing students who's a dad who I was walking behind. And I just thought, you know, isn't that just the perfect illustration of what we do at UCC? There's a few generations there that will be changed because of the education we're able to provide. And then there's some of our nursing students and I believe the young lady right in the middle was a Roseburg School District student who's now. In the second year of our nursing program. So, thank you for doing this work with us. It's not easy. We don't choose work because it's easy. We choose it because it's right. And, and you play an enormous part in that. When you serve on a board. Of a, of an organization like a school district in a small community like this. You do hold in your hands the next generation, but it's even bigger than that, right? Because you're this community treasure. Our school district is the center of so much of what happens and. So you also have this bigger responsibility. How are you gonna make your community better? How's everybody gonna benefit from what you do? And thank you for taking that seriously and working with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, Rachel, and always, always great to see you. Come back anytime you want. You just let us know.
Advanced manufacturing next time.
Okay, we, we welcome that.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, have a, have a good evening and. Yeah, go Hawks. And next we have a communications update with our wonderful communications coordinator. We are so blessed to have Chelsea Duncan, so take it away, Chelsea.
Thank you very much. Can you all hear me okay? They're picking up? Okay. So I'm just gonna walk you through some of the communications platforms and. Initiatives that we have going on. I don't have slides, but you do have printouts, I believe, at your desk. And there are a few ways that communications kind of supports this strategic plan. But for me, it's really important that we're communicating that strategic plan to our staff, our students, our community, our families. To make sure that they understand your vision for student success and. That's why we try to bake in that language anywhere we can and just keep that consistent. Consistent momentum moving forward. And one of the things I love most about this. This role is that there are just so many things that happen every day that show the strategic plan in action. And it's, there are just so many amazing stories of students and staff doing incredible things that it's, it's, there are like too many for us to keep up on, but we do our best, so. And I'm gonna walk you through first, kind of this August through December 2024 report. And I just kind of looked at some data from our various platforms. So communications, the team includes myself and Tanisha Reed from Douglas CSD. Our main platforms include social media channels, smore for our newsletters, our website, Parent Square. And various news media. Our primary goals focus on, you know, community and parent engagement, building trust, building transparency. Supporting enrollment and supporting staff and administrators in their jobs. The first. Set of data that I have to show you is from our social media. We have a really popular social media account. It's our district's. Main page that we focus most of our attention on. And our reach is pretty incredible. It's driven, reach is driven by engagement, which I kind of go into in this first graph. Content interactions and it just kind of shows how over the years we've been able to build, continue to build that. That engagement and that engagement by telling our stories of all the great things going on. We reach a lot of people. Our highest monthly reach for this school year so far was in November. We reached, this is an estimate based on Meta's data, but Facebook data. But more than 58,000 people, so it's like be way beyond our community. And let me know if you have questions.
What's an interaction?
So an interaction is like you like a post or you comment on a post or you share a post. That just increases your reach, like exponentially.
It's an outreach?
It's a like.
But there's a response or?
Response to a post on Facebook.
It's a response.
Yeah.
But it's basically like external interaction. So it's like somebody from wherever is interacting with our.
Yeah, and like when someone, when someone likes our post, their friends are probably gonna see it. And if someone shares a post, their friends are gonna see it and then it just grows from there. So I list, I have some of our most popular posts and fun stories, just some data for you guys to see. These were our most popular stories so far this school year. Most of them. On this one post with the football players. You know, it received a lot of reach. 23% of were from our followers, but 77% of that reach was from non-followers. So you can just see the, the. It could, the reach goes beyond our community. This story here of the welding student, I just wanna say is really cool because yesterday we learned that this student, based on this post, received two job offers. So, yeah, pretty cool. So. And then the next graph goes into our reach a little bit more and you can see that it gets into the tens of thousands of numbers. So it's a really popular platform for sharing our, sharing our story. We do have additional social media. We have, I'm helping with Roseburg High School's social media this school year, so I'm trying to build that up and get the same amount of following and reach that we have with the district page. And so that's a work in progress. Each individual school, some of them have their own social media, some don't. It's pretty much up to the principals how they wanna manage that. But we do provide guidance when they, when they seek that out. I have some data on our website. You can see that we attract quite a few people to our website. A lot of them, I'm, I'm kind of still learning about website data and analytics and whatnot, but I've found that a lot of our users are coming to us. To our website once and then leaving and not coming back. So my goal for the website is to. Create more useful content that people wanna keep coming back for, so that they can keep getting more information that is relevant to them. I also have a list of kind of the top pages that people tend to view when they come to our website, so. Obviously, they hit our homepage. Staff obviously use our website a lot. People are always looking for calendars, school menus, human resources. Online enrollment, so pretty much what you'd expect. We also have our newsletters. We have the community corner for the entire community that goes out once a month. Working on trying to get those views and reads up every time, so we try different strategies like. Circulating different stories throughout those newsletters, rewriting them a little bit so they appear fresh, you know, different strategies. Roseburg inside is for staff. That's where Jared shares his messages to staff primarily. And then I'll take you to Parent Square. Parent Square, we implemented this year and it's been pretty successful. It's a pretty user-friendly platform. Couple of things, bit of a learning curve, but it's just been really ideal for streamlining communications. I will pull it up here. Actually. I'll pull up my account and talk a little bit about how useful it was for today's. Little incident at Joseph Lane Middle School that you heard about. This platform, Parent Square, we were able to get out a message to all families really quickly, just letting them know what was going on. And then you can see that in these messages. Parents have the ability to react. We can see how many are notified in real time. We can see the reactions. People can comment and ask questions in real time and staff are able to answer. And it's just a really efficient way to get information out. We have really good contactability for Parent Square, which means basically that the people we need to be able to contact will get a message if it's an urgent message. So we're still kind of. Working on protocols for that, but basically almost everyone is contact, contactable in some way. And with that. Wanted to talk a little bit about our career pathways work that we're doing and how we're sharing that information with students and families and staff. We have built a career pathways website, which I can also. Possibly show you. Well, if I knew how to get out of here, I would show you. But we have a career pathways website and it has all of these career pathway guides that Mr. Steinacher and I have been working on. And he's been the one filling out all the, all the details, all the specifics. But we have one for each of our pathways that we're developing. And we have been working with Principal Vickery to share these with students and counselors and staff and families. As students are course, course requesting right now, looking with their counselors. We're getting messaging out to parents so that they know to go over these with their kids and make sure that they're taking full advantage of those opportunities. So you can just see here one of the pathways. And then on the second page, there is a flyer that we created for. The Pride Night for the eighth graders who came in and, and looked at all the offerings at RHS. I think that's about it. Is there anything that you guys, that stands out to you guys or is there anything that you have questions about that I can help answer?
I just wondered for the career pathways, these two slides. Are those gonna be on the community corner?
Yeah, so now, so we've really kind of dialed them in and then the goal is to really just, we're gonna be splashing them out to the community, get them on social media. Make sure that everyone has access to them, so yeah.
So all the communication channels.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be.
I think that's really important that everything is covered with that one.
Couple of comments for you. The Facebook page is great. It is one of the only. Fun and nice things about Facebook. It, it's nice to go on there and see something that's positive and, and is our, showcasing our kids and people like it. As you can see, you're doing a great job there. The website, I told you last year there was no bell schedule. I went on and checked this year. The bell schedule has been added for the high school. It is not for like Melrose, I checked. I didn't check the other elementary schools. I'm probably a minority here, but for those of us parents whose kids ride the bus and then every once in a while you get to pick them up, you forget pretty quickly what time the actual class gets let out. So I, I, that's several things I happened like as a last year, I tell Jared, man, every, so a few months or so, I jump on the website to find out what time this actual school gets out. But it was nice to see that was there at the high school. They got the whole bell schedule there. And Parent Square is awesome. It's fantastic. It's so much better than what we had before. Like it's the communication that you guys get and the individual teachers and the principal can get can go directly to who they wanna target to and we get it immediately. And we can send in sick notes, callouts and all that stuff is automated and it takes me three seconds instead of having to call the office. Get somebody on the phone who wastes their time and then they have to enter it in, so bravo on all of these things. Everything's doing great.
And maybe you went over this and it's one of those few times I was sleeping, but I don't know. But is there, is there any way that directors can get? Maybe you already have looped in on, cause I had no idea. I mean, I knew, the only reason why I knew what's going on at Jolene was. I don't look at Facebook that much, but today I happen to look on Facebook and so is there any way? That directors can get looped in on like the, the parent square.
Square, so I did create accounts for you all at one point, your guests. Square. So I did create accounts for you all at one point, your guests, the level of information you want to receive. If you want every update from every school. You know, it could could get a little wary. So I mean, we can.
Is there something where you could drill it, it could be drilled down where?
Probably, yeah, we can, I'll, I'll, I'll look into that.
I I don't want to create a bunch of work for, because I know you guys are busy, but if it's.
It's pretty customizable, so. Yeah.
Well, I have more power than you. Okay, thank you.
So I I too really appreciate Facebook. It's just, I learned something new and I love. The students and the photographs and to celebrate, you know, I'm probably one of your biggest likers and lovers. But as far as the career CTE program, so I I've said this to Jared and I said to a couple of directors is. This is so amazing. And I believe that, and you guys may think I'm weird, but I believe that we need to actually get this information. To elementary students so that like at each parent teacher conference. That something is said, well, hey, just preparing for the future. This is currently what we will have available for your student, just to get them to start thinking about it. You know, they may start having decisions about moving out of the area. They may say, oh, I've got a kid that loves mechanical things and. I know that we if we stay here, we can, you know, but just to get them start thinking about that. And then as they hit the middle school, start hammering it even harder. So that they're not just getting it, you know, in sixth grade. Oh, it's like, no, these parents have a plan, you know? So that would be my only. Maybe we can. Or not.
I love it, yeah.
Any, any other comments, questions?
Although, if that's okay, I'll just jump in. I just want to just. I oftentimes will say to people, if you're lucky enough to live in Douglas County, this is what's available. And that isn't said enough. Oftentimes say, we've got incredible kids and it's not said enough. But we're really, really fortunate to have great people working for us. Give kudos to anybody tonight, given the communication. I just want to say, Chelsea, thank you. Chelsea has a very unique gift. To take these ideas, I'll speak for myself. She's maybe laughing about this. There's times I'll go to Chelsea with an idea that probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense, right? But she does have a gift of putting that into a way that gets people inspired and behind something. I would say give credit to a lot of our, a lot of the board's vision. Can be complex because there's a lot to think about. The district's vision, lots of things to do, but Chelsea has a unique way of. Galvanizing that into a message that people can get behind. And that talent is unique and it's paying off for us and we'll need to accelerate that with just the conversations today. So thank you. Cam's done a great job and I appreciate that.
Well, with that being said, I think our meeting is over. The next meeting is March twelfth at Melrose. Meeting adjourned.